Council, will the clerk please call the roll?
Certainly. Honorable Mayor Lansing.
Here.
Alderman Beidler.
Here.
Alderman Morris.
Here.
Alderman Newman.
Here.
Alderman Rumel.
Here.
Alderman Tac.
Here.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Here.
Alderman Moreno.
Here.
Alderman Bushman.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have it for him.
Thank you very much. Will you please all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First item on the agenda, reports of city officers, comments by the mayor. I would just like to make note to the public at large that there was a public meeting that began at four o'clock today until six of the city council to hear the report of the actuaries on our pension fund obligations here in the city and various strategies and outlooks for that. While it's a very complicated subject, best taken in short doses, I would say that it's fair to say that the longstanding principles and character of the way this town has been run, the city's been run over the many years, is also well-present in this whole matter of dealing with our pension obligations and the state and so forth. And we will work this out to the best that it can be on behalf of Lake Forest citizens. But this is a constant subject. I think there's almost nothing about it that we don't understand or aren't aware of, and we're working at it very diligently. It's obviously not a favorite subject for a lot of people, so it doesn't get into the newspapers very often or into even our newsletters here in the city, but I can assure you the staff and the council and various committees are working on this very diligently. We have a promotion tonight, and I'd like to introduce Deputy Chief Kevin Cronin to provide some background about Mike Mounts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, residents and guests. I'm honored to be here today to introduce you to our future Lieutenant Michael Mount and his wife Melissa. Mike started with us back in November of 2001. He came to us already trained as a firefighter paramedic. He's, we were just discussing it, he's been doing this since about 1994 when he started as a kid in high school going to some classes. Mike's passion is probably, we would say, would be in the paramedic field. He does a good job with training. He's always looking for, to help out all the individuals in the fire department, and he'll be a huge asset to our officer rank in that role. He's going to take on some of the leadership roles in the paramedic part of our department. So, Mike Mounts and Melissa.
Please step forward.
May I ask you to raise your right hand? I, Michael A. Mounts.
I, Michael A. Mounts.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution and the laws of the State of Illinois.
And the ordinances, rules and regulations.
And the ordinances, rules and regulations.
Of the City of Lake Forest.
Of the City of Lake Forest.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of the position of Lieutenant.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of the position of Lieutenant.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I further swear to uphold the mission.
I further swear to uphold the mission.
Of the Lake Forest Fire Department.
Of the Lake Forest Fire Department.
And work to fulfill its vision to the best of my ability.
And work to fulfill its vision to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
professionally-run life safety, public safety community. So, congratulations. It's a wonderful achievement. Next, I think there's a lot of folks here from the fire department that need to go do some celebrating, so if you all want to depart now, I won't hold you. Oh, my gosh, it's half the room.
That'd be a big bar tab.
Next is some board and commission appointments that I would like to make for Croya, our committee representing our young adults, to make two new appointments. One is Carolyn Belsky, resident of Lake Bluff. As many of you know, we have a joint board representation between Lake Bluff and Lake Forest, arising really or deriving, I should say, from our Lake Forest-Lake Bluff District 115 and high school engagement. Carolyn Belsky, you'd be appointed for a term, and Jennifer Karas from Lake Forest. In the council packet is the biographies and backgrounds, and both are really excellent and strong backgrounds to be involved with this youth organization. May I have a motion to approve the appointments?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Thank you. The next is comments by the city manager, Robert Kiley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Historic preservation is an important, integral part of who we are. It's part of our mission, our vision statement, and certainly part of our strategic plan. And we're very fortunate in this community to have an organization that does yeoman work in promoting historic preservation throughout the community, particularly residential homes, as you'll see. But at this time of year, we see all the signs go up around town of past recipients of the Historic Preservation Foundation's annual award program. And this evening, we're fortunate to have the president with us, Jim Opsenick, who is going to review with the council and the community this year's award winner. So, Jim?
Mr. Kiley, Mr. Mayor, council members, it's a pleasure to be here this evening. This year marks the 27th anniversary that the foundation has presented awards. Since 1991, over 220 awards have been presented to homeowners, businesses, architects and landscape architects that have demonstrated a commitment to the excellence in preserving Lake Forest's unique heritage. A six-member panel of the foundation board members, including three architects, evaluated the nominations, which were judged according to the Secretary of Interior's guidelines for the treatment of historic properties. Out of all the nominations received, 12 award winners were in three categories. Rehabilitation, which is the acknowledgement of the need to alter or add to a historic structure while protecting its historical architectural character. This also includes adaptive reuse. Infill and new construction. It's the building of new construction that demonstrates excellent contextual compatibility in an established neighborhood. And preservation, maintaining the historical integrity and character of a structure or landscape through ongoing conservation, maintenance and repair. Our first category, or our first award winner, is 30 Onwunsea Road, or Awani Road, excuse me. Standing alongside Awani Road, facing east towards the Onwunsea Club, this stately 1927 Stanley Anderson-designed brick and half-timber Tudor owned by Ed and Marie Pasquese has been expanded with a sunroom addition on the left side of the house and designed by Lake Forest architect Scott Stradiv. The arched top windows and stone cladding complement the original house design. A period garden with appropriately scaled urns and ornaments is sited to the south of the addition. Its charming rear facade creates a great afternoon garden west of the house as well. So, congratulations to the Pasqueses for a preservation award in rehabilitation. 339 Foster Place was facing a potential threat of demolition when it was purchased by Charrington Drake in 2014. This 1958 mid-century modern design by I.W. Coburn still had the original kitchen, including the 1950's oven and stove. So, working with architect William Macy, the originally attached garage to the north of the house was converted to a guest house and then attached to the building via a covered breezeway. The interior was rehabbed and the collab, between the collaboration of the owner and architect, Coburn's original vision was sustained. This is showing the possibilities of preserving modernist design into traditional Lake Forest architecture. So, congratulations to Charrington Drake for rehabilitation award. 902 North Green Bay Road tucked down a private lane off of Green Bay Road is this 1911 Howard Van Doren Shaw-designed house, which has striking beauty of both house and landscape. The distinctive brick and limestone residence known as Clayola was home to the three generations of Donnelly owners from 1911 to 1910, before being purchased and rehabbed by the current owners Stephanie and John Harris. The original south garden room trellis by Shaw has been preserved and replanted on various occasions, and most recently by landscape architect Charles Stick. Nonhistoric additions and alterations to the house were replaced with more historically appropriate improvements. The distinctive east entry facade stands identical to and as fresh as it was in 1911. The Harrises are the winner of preservation award for rehabilitation. There is perhaps no other residence in Lake Forest that epitomizes the word landmark, quite like 51 South Mayflower. Standing some 75 feet tall, it is ironic in every sense, or I should say iconic in every sense. Built in 1928 and designed by David Adler, it is the original service building and tower to the Alfred Hamill Estate known as Centaurus. The building originally was designed as a three-car garage with two apartments for staff. It was subdivided from the main house in the 50's and purchased by Eva and Craig Quackenbush in the 80's. Over the years, new doors, windows, restoration of the stucco exterior, upgrade of landscaping and the cobblestone driveway, and restoration of the greenhouse, as well as rehabilitation of the interior to create one-of-a-kind family home. So, congratulations to Eva and Craig Quackenbush, winner of a preservation award for rehabilitation. In a neighborhood of large estate-sized homes on one side and smaller homes experiencing teardowns and major expansion on the other, this home at 1090 Edgewood has remarkably managed to maintain its original scale and charm for the past 90 years. This home, this story in a half-gambrel roofed colonial residence was designed by architect Walter Frazier in 1927. The house has been expanded by several owners, but always leaving the streetscape of this handsomely proportioned house and its front garden little changed from the original appearance 90 years ago. The current owners, Peggy and Dan Schweller, have expanded the house with their own addition to the rear, as well as a first-floor master suite and basement below. Working with the Gobler Company, their project also included removal of nonhistoric aluminum siding, gutters, downspouts and windows, and replacement with cedar siding sized as originally, copper gutters, downspouts and double-hung true divided light windows. Congratulations to the Schwellers, winning a preservation award for rehabilitation. From time to time, a rehab comes along that is so skillfully undertaken that the new blends seamlessly and effortlessly with the original, as is the case at 800 Sheridan Road, the home of Meredith and Lance Mitchell. The owners, working with Lake Forest Landmark Development and their builder, the Gobler Company, have rejuvenated this historically and architecturally significant 1927 Stanley Anderson-designed residence. The rehab project included expansion of the original garage, construction of a kitchen and master suite addition on the back of the house, and with renovation of the interior. Not only was the architect's expansion plan designed to minimize its impact on the original structure, but the craftsmanship of the builder and in particularly the masons that laid the stonework to match the garage and rear addition with the original is truly outstanding. Congratulations to the Mitchell family, winners of the preservation award for rehabilitation. 111 Westminster was another project of exceptional design and craftsmanship in the newly-constructed detached garage at, on Westminster Avenue, the night, of the 1928 Noble Judah State. This award for new construction recognizes the compatibility, new freestanding garage with exceptional quality designed by the Polton Group to match the manor house in form and materials. A new courtyard also relates the new building to the main house. The garage replaces a nonhistoric structure that was built when the original 1924 garage by David Adler was subdivided off in 1946. All materials and construction techniques duplicated those found in the original plans of the house. Congratulations to the Connells and the Polton Group, winners of a preservation award for new construction. 1313 West Lee, nestled on a wooded lot with dense canopy of large trees, this new stone and slate French Renaissance revival house is both elegant and restrained. The dark slate roof, limestone cornices and coins, random ashlar stone walls and stained wood doors, all characteristic of the French style. This beautiful residence of Dr. Derek and Anaki Bach was designed by the Melikar Architects and built by Lynch Construction. The simplicity of design not only complements the site, but also does an excellent job being compatible with other houses in the area. Congratulations to the Box, winners of a preservation award for infill. In architecture, it's the small details that matter. And that is not the one I need at this point. Excuse me. Let me back up one. Hmm, well, kind of out of sync here a little bit, but okay, we'll jump to Lake Road. So, there may be no more recognizable fence in town than the one found along the north end of Lake Road with its distinctive black and white color scheme and repetitive swag form. Originally associated with the 1929 Adler-designed Bentley House just to the north, this southern most section of fencing is the result of a subdivision and now belongs to 1401 Lake. This segment of fencing has been maintained regularly beginning 35 years ago by owners Mary Claire and Lowell Dixon. This distinctive historic fence installed, reconstructed and/or designed by the firm of David Adler in 1932 has been well-preserved and faithfully maintained by the Dixons for a third of a century, working more recently with the Gobler Company to replace deteriorated parts where necessary in matching the original design. Congratulations to the Dixon for a preservation award, for preservation of this Adler gym. 1111 Summerfield, standing majestically along the west side of Waukegan Road, like Mount Vernon overlooking the Potomac, which is pictured in the upper-right picture, it is among the most recognizable homes in Lake Forest, home of Nancy and Adrian Smith, this well-preserved classic two-story country house with its colonial revival two-story portico facing east across the long greensward. Now home to one of the world's most noted architects and his spouse, it was originally the home of one of the nation's major builders of hotels and other large structures nearly a century ago, Walter Ashlinger. The Smiths have owned the home since 1987 and have worked on it every year to ensure its preservation. Congratulations to them for 2017 preservation award. The average length of homeownership in the U.S. is about six years. The home and our last recipient has been in their family for close to 90 years. If ever there were an example of being a good steward for a long-term preservation of a home, this is it. It's embodied in Prue and Frank Beidler's home and the Beidler family ownership of 20 Stonegate. Understated in its elegance and situated in a garden that is second to none, this 1926 Harry T. Lindberg-designed house is a smaller version of the tall-roofed French Renaissance style of both the nearby Wildwood Estate and the 1928 Onwunsea Club. In more recent years, historically sensitive improvements were designed by architect Tom Raikovic with landscaping designed by Hershaw Landscape Architects, including a newer pool and related development. Congratulations to Prue and Frank Beidler, recipients of a preservation award. These are kind of a composite U of all of our awardees, and now a picture of our train station, which of course we're all very familiar with, but I wanted to take the opportunity to give you a brief update with what is happening at the train station, some of the revelations that were discovered, particularly the original oak planking that dates back to 1900. This was covered by the wainscoting in the main waiting room, and we're looking towards revealing that and restoring that to its original splendor. Floor tile and plaster work is also being considered to renovate the train station at this time. The foundation has raised close to $85,000 towards this restoration, and we are looking to raise another $50,000, so if you would happen to have any suggestions, we would be more than happy to entertain it. And as a personal note, going back to our recipients for the awards, two of our homes that were awarded were designed by Stanley Anderson, which I take particular pleasure in because I happen to live in Stanley Anderson's home. So, I thank you very much for your presence, and thank you again.
Thank you very much, Jim. Are there any questions of Jim? I think, well, first, congratulations, Alderman Beidler, on being a recipient.
I married the right guy. I haven't been in that house for nine years, just, 41, 41.
Well, I think what's always nice about the Preservation Foundation coming forward at this time and showing their annual award winners is to give real-life examples of what people are doing with residential and, in some cases, commercial properties around town, because we always hear from the people that just want to knock a house down because it's old or it doesn't work, but clearly we have a number of examples where people have taken great care in trying to restore both the interior and exterior of the properties, and we're very fortunate, I think, as a community to have those people step forward and do that. So, thank you very much. The next item on my agenda is a brief presentation, because Elizabeth has been here two hours and probably doesn't want to prolong this presentation any longer than she has to, but I asked Elizabeth to be here this evening because, as the council knows, annually we adopt our comprehensive financial plan, but really all that does is it sort of sets the parameters under which the staff can go out and spend money for goods or services and so forth. But I wanted the council and the community to understand that we take our responsibility of utilizing the public funds that we have very seriously and have tried to abide by the purchasing policies that the city has in place to make sure that we are getting the biggest bang for our buck and that we're able to take each of those public dollars and stretch them as far as we possibly can. And it's also, I think, was timely because of some of the changes that we have with the council members, is that you see a number of purchases come before you on your agenda, and you probably don't have an opportunity to see behind the curtain and what happens before it finally gets to you here this evening. So, Elizabeth is going to provide you a little purchasing 101 overview. So, Elizabeth?
Thank you. So, the city's purchasing policies and procedures are set out in an administrative directive, specifically Administrative Directive 3.5, which we do review and update on a fairly frequent basis, but it has both the policies set out for the operating departments to follow, but also a number of forms that are used in the purchasing process. So, for purposes of this evening's presentation, I just thought I would take you over a high, at a high level, just a couple of the thresholds and benchmarks that are used in purchasing-related issues. The first one being authorization of procurements. These are actual benchmarks that are set up in the financial system. We have an online requisition and purchase order process, so operating departments enter those requisitions into the financial system and they go through an online approval queue based on the dollar threshold. So, that table sets up what those authorization levels are. A department supervisor or department head approves all requisitions for their department. Any procurements or requisitions over $1,000 are reviewed and approved by the finance department. Any requisitions over $10,000 also route through the city manager's office and are approved by the city manager, and any procurements over $20,000 are reviewed by the finance department to ensure that those have been approved by the city council in conformance with Administrative Directive 3.5. The next relates to authorization of contracts. So, these are any contracts for services or purchases. Those contracts that are under $5,000 can be approved by the department head. Contracts within $5,000 to $19,999 are approved by the city manager, and any contracts $20,000 and over are approved by the city council. So, frequently you will see approval of contracts on your agenda. The next is pricing. So, the Administrative Directive sets forth guidelines for the departments regarding pricing. For purchases less than $5,000, that's flexible purchasing, and that is up to the department head to determine the most appropriate means for purchasing that particular item. For anything between $5,000 and $19,999, that follows open-market purchasing, and that is, those guidelines are set forth in Section 6 of the Administrative Directive, but that typically provides for three quotes. They can be provided by telephone or facsimile or written quotes, but that Section 6 provides guidelines for that open-market purchasing, and there's an open-market purchasing form that the department can track what quotes they receive for that purchase. And for purchases of $20,000 and greater, generally the Administrative Directive calls for competitive bids for that purchase, and those competitive bid requirements are set forth in Section 7 of the Administrative Directive. There are exceptions provided for in the Directive on pricing, and those exceptions are provided here. There is a provision for requests for proposals and qualification-based There is a provision for request for proposals and qualification-based selection. That is set forth in Section 8 of the Administrative Directive. That is where it's determined that a purchase isn't really conducive to a bid-based selection, that there is qualification-based criteria that should be taken into account when selecting that vendor. It's most often used for professional services, and it's determined that a request for proposals rather than a request for bids is in the city's best interest. And that allows for other qualification-based criteria to factor into the selection and not necessarily the lowest price is selected. Other exceptions to the requirements are a specific city council waiver. So the city council may be requested to waive bids in a particular requirement, for a particular requirement or purchase that does require two-thirds of the city council approving that waiver. So you may see a request from a department come forward requesting such a waiver. Professional services, as noticed, can follow the qualification-based selection per Section 8 and instead use a request for proposal process. Emergency purchases also fall under the exception-based criteria. If they are over $20,000, those are ratified at the next city council meeting. Also, sole-source purchases, so you will sometimes see purchases over $20,000 which do not have pricing because of a sole-source vendor. There is only one vendor that can provide that. Common things such as maintenance, software maintenance vendors, where we've purchased a particular software, and only that software vendor can provide maintenance for that software is a common example. Government joint purchasing is also an example for an exception. If they're over $20,000, they will come to council with an explanation that through some government joint purchasing, a bid process has occurred through some other process, and the city is able to use that pricing and purchase through that process. Procurements for resale are an exception. Trade professional organizations and private public educational memberships are also an exception for obvious reasons. An existing relationship, I think you've seen these already, this is a common request coming on city council write-ups, where the city has an ongoing relationship with a vendor, usually professional service-related. That vendor has background on the city, may have done a previous phase of a particular project or service, and is deemed to be able to provide more efficient services because of their knowledge of a particular project or knowledge of the city. So those are all exceptions set forth in the purchasing directive. And that is all I have, so I will be happy to answer any questions you have.
On these existing relationships, would this come still before the city council in our packets?
Yes, any contract over $20,000 would still come to the city council for approval. They would just set forth that request using this. They'll usually use the reference to 9.0K as the particular section of the Administrative Directive that they're requesting approval for.
Given trends in purchasing over the years, are the limits right? Would you change the limits, or would you?
Last year, we did a comprehensive review of the purchasing policy, and we did a survey of surrounding communities to test that. There was a request to increase that threshold by the operating departments, and we were on the upper, if not in the norm, of the surrounding communities, so we elected not to request an increase to the $20,000 threshold from the city council.
And the number of requests at each of the thresholds, are they fairly consistent year to year?
Yes. Yeah.
Any other questions, thoughts? Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you, Elizabeth. And I would just say to the city council that we will periodically bring a topic, much like purchasing, to the council, just to provide you some background. But if there's anything in particular that you have of interest, let us know. I know we had HR in here about six months ago, nine months ago, but any topic that you can think of that you'd like to learn more about, please let us know. We can arrange for the appropriate staff people to be in attendance. And with that, that completes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Bob. Next item on the agenda is comments by council members, and I'd like to go straight to Finance Committee and the consideration of the Annual Appropriation Ordinance for fiscal year 2018 and approval of rollovers. First reading, Elizabeth Hollup to make a short presentation.
Okay. We're requesting from the city council this evening first reading of the Annual Appropriation Ordinance. Second and final reading would come back to you July 17 with a public hearing. Although the city adopts a budget the first meeting of May, the first meeting of the fiscal year, the appropriation ordinance is the formal legal mechanism by which the city appropriates and authorizes expenditure of city funds. The requirement of the city is to have the appropriation ordinance adopted by the end of the first quarter of the year, so that's by July 31, and once approved, that must be filed with the county clerk. Because the budget and the appropriation ordinance differs, we do include in the packet kind of a walkthrough of how we get from the budget to the numbers in the appropriation ordinance, and that was included on page 21 of your packet. So we do start with the budget and numbers by fund, but then we reduce from that the debt payments and the debt service funds, because those annual debt payments are approved when the bond ordinances are approved. So that provides the appropriation authority for the annual principal and interest payments for the debt service. We don't have to appropriate that annually. We add to that the rollovers. Rollovers are amounts that were appropriated in the previous year, so they were budgeted and appropriated in FY '17, but those expenditures did not occur. So the departments are requesting approval to now spend those funds in the following fiscal year. So you receive a detailed listing of the actual rollover requests by fund, and you have that in your packet on pages 19 and 20. What I would note is that this is an early list that is expected to change. We'll attach a similar list on July 17, but because we are still making payments on fiscal year '17 invoices, it's possible that some of these will get paid off, so we do expect this list to change. But you can review and see each individual request from the departments of what they would like to roll over from FY '17 to FY '18. Those get added to the appropriation ordinance, and they get added to the system as budget amendments to the FY '18 budget. And then the library is not included in the city's approved budget, but they are included in the city's appropriation ordinance because they are a component unit of the city. So the library's approved budget is added to the appropriation ordinance, and that gives us a subtotal number. And then the city has historically added to the appropriation ordinance a 10% contingency in each fund. That is not added to the spending amount in the system that the budgets, that the departments have, but it provides appropriation authority for the city council to use throughout the year for any unexpected occurrences during the year that may come up. And then that contingency amount gets added to the appropriation authority and the appropriation ordinance to result in the final approved amounts by fund that you see included in the appropriation ordinance.
Do you ever have rollovers extend to a second rollover?
We do. There are several on this list that were actually originally appropriated in FY '16.
Is there a particular reason why they would extend two years beyond the original appropriation?
I don't know specifically. One item I know that's missing from this list that needs to be added to the July list is the ambulance. So there was an ambulance that was appropriated in FY '16 in the capital plan, and that ambulance still has not been purchased, so we continue to roll over. So for one reason or another, an amount has been budgeted, but the city has made a decision not to proceed with that particular expenditure, so it gets rolled over. Another one, for example, is the city purchased in FY '16 a new parks and recreation software system. We purchased at that time the maintenance work order module to that system. We have not implemented it yet. So the vendor has not rolled out the version of it that we're ready to implement yet. So because we have delayed that implementation, that is another rollover that's continued.
So when would you cut that off in those examples? When you say enough is enough, right?
Well, we have incorporated work orders into our ERP request for proposal with the idea that if the ERP, the financial system, has a better work order module, we may go that route and abandon the park and recreation work order module, for example.
Right, but I mean, in terms of the ambulance, to take that, if it continues to roll over and rollover, is there a point in even continuing, right? Or any of the others that are rolled over multiple years?
Yep. Should the decision be made not to purchase that ambulance, then we would not roll over the funds anymore, and that, those funds would then be available for appropriation for something else.
And Alderman, that discussion is going to be coming before the Public Works Committee in the next couple of months, and the city council before the end of this calendar year.
On the ambulance?
On the ambulance.
Right.
Actually, it's a fire engine, not an ambulance.
Yeah, because it seems, on your question, Alderman Morris, that, you know, if it's a four-year project and there's just timeline slippage, but it's a project and we've begun it, it's one thing, but when you have a capital item that, you know, is not being pursued for a variety of good and worthy reasons, at some point, maybe it comes up for re-review as to whether we're really going to do it, so.
The only other example that I can give that Elizabeth, or actually Chuck Myers is here, is we will sometimes put money into the budget for matching grant requirements. So a grant might be 80/20, and so we put the money in to represent our share, and it may take a while. I think we just heard the other day about the cemetery grant we finally were awarded, and so, you know, that's one of the other examples that we can have that can roll multiple years. But two years is probably the longest, I think, that we've probably had.
Right.
Can you just talk a little bit about, I think this is where there's some interfacing with the school budgets. Is that correct?
Yes, the School District 67 does get added because of the charter, the city charter. So the School District 67 does get added to the appropriation ordinance in the final reading. It's not in this version because we don't have the final numbers yet, but they will give us the numbers from their budget, and then their budgeted numbers will get added to the appropriation ordinance for final reading.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of ancient history. It goes back to 1861 there with the formation of the city of Lake Forest and our retaining powers over a lot of activities, including the elementary schools. And when we, it was decided by council many years ago that they should become an independent board with their own budget authority and so forth, so that we did not disrupt the charter for legal reasons in order to preserve other rights and whatnot. There still is this process where it comes back through our ordinance and so forth to sort of maintain, what, the legal niceties? There's probably a more elegant way to say it.
No, quirk of history, I think, is a technical legal phrase. As Mayor indicated, the schools under our charter are part of the city. In the 20s, 1920s, the law changed to allow schools to be segregated as independent entities, and that's what happened in Lake Forest, but because the city does own the buildings and the land and of the continued integrated nature of them, the city continues to levy, to appropriate the funds and levy the funds technically as far as the county is concerned. But when it's looking at, for example, the tax cap, it's treated independently, but the vehicle through which they obtain their appropriation and levy is our appropriation and levy ordinances.
And that's for 67 only, not for 115.
Correct.
See, I thought that it had changed because, when we went to an elected school board versus an appointed school.
That is, part of the changes back in the 20s.
No, no.
No, no.
Was that in 90?
90. Yeah, yeah.
The school changed, not from the city's perspective, the separation occurred based on that earlier law.
Yeah, because it was an appointed board under the, because of the city charter too. So I thought that that had also changed the way that the monies were appropriated, but apparently not, is what you're saying.
Yeah, because you might remember, Alderman, when you were on the school board, you had to come and make a presentation to the city council, and that was to sort of present the budget and ask that it be incorporated into the levy.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Really, the process is much the same, although we haven't asked the school board to make a formal presentation since the voters had the referendum and separated from an appointed to an elected body.
But, yeah, but it still is handled the same way appropriation-wise.
Correct.
So really, the requirement to come and appear before the city council and present a budget, it was not impacted, right? It wasn't really a requirement, it was more a courtesy.
Correct.
Elizabeth, would you explain why the pension funds have a contingency reserve in the appropriation? Is it just across the board, or?
Yeah, we just have always applied the 10% to all, because it's possible that they can have refunds of contributions.
Okay.
If, for example, there's an employee that leaves and has their contributions refunded, we don't actually budget for that. So that would be an unanticipated expense in that pension fund, so it'd be good to have that contingency there.
Any further council discussion or questions? Hearing none. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to ask a question or discuss this? Seeing none, council action is required, so I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the first reading of this ordinance and the rollovers. A public hearing will be conducted on July 17, 2017, in conjunction with the second reading of this ordinance. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
This is a roll call vote. City Clerk?
Certainly. Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Rumel?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Eight yeas, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next comments from other council members. Alderman Beidler?
Thank you, Mayor Lansing. I am hoping, Susan Banks, thank you for helping me out. I'd like to do a very quick update on the city's marketing campaign, the Welcome Home campaign. Some of you may have seen this in Sheridan Road, the most recent Sheridan Road. As you know, we have, because you've seen similar presentations now a few times, we have a number of different kind of taglines for the Welcome Home. Here we have "Safety has found a home here," and I think you know that safety is very much towards the top of the list every time we talk about reasons to live in Lake Forest, and it's an incredibly compelling one. So let me just, I'm just going to really just kind of go through a list here. The Welcome Home campaign soft-launched on the website and via social media, actually, June 1. Our videos and our 60 and 30-second spots are now under the Welcome Home banners, isn't that right, Susan, on the city's website? So anybody who wants to see those, that's available. This material will be very dynamic over the three-year period as videos, photos, and other materials are presented. We've met with the local real estate professionals to provide them with marketing tools, product ideas, one of them, which is a Welcome Home doormat, and strategies for prospective buyers. And I was actually in attendance at that meeting, and Mayor Lansing did a terrific job pumping up the realtors, so that was great. And they are, I think, very appreciative of the efforts, the partnership that we have on this. The Welcome Home Community signboards are up. You may have seen those at various places. We showed the 62nd Commercial at Real Estate Professionals Meeting, all four ward meetings at the annual dinner honoring members and volunteers on the city's boards and commissions, and to the Lake Forest and Lake Bluff Rotary Club, all with very favorable responses. responses. The Rotary Club got the entire marketing campaign presentation. We're setting up meetings to finalize elements of targeted corporate campaigns for corporate education, community organizations, and religious institutions, and local businesses. We are, we are at the point now of taking a very close look, a deep dive into the, how we want to use the rest of our allocated funds for print advertising, and we will certainly be using Cranes and Chicago Magazine at some point, and we'll take a look and try to figure out what the math on that's going to be. And then we've set up a Facebook page for the Welcome Home campaign, and Susan's actually going to show us that page, I think. And she's going to show us how we can like things, which is not something I do a lot, but.
We've already liked this, so you go right here and you like it, if you're on Facebook.
There you go. So if you're on Facebook, we, you can, you can, you can interact with us. So that's terrific. So that's, I'm getting just periodically, I think, I think you may have recalled that I said last.
Oh, there we go.
See? I still don't know.
There we go.
Hop on the picture of me with the upside down golf club.
Which Coco Chanel ad was that?
Five thousand dollars, that's what we get.
Okay. And Jack, thank you, I can't tell you how. So my goal there was to be someplace other than the sort of the typical places that people see, and unfortunately, I didn't suggest that the magazine actually note that this was the newly renovated Deerpath Golf Course. But while we're on the subject of that, I was visiting there about 10 days ago. I think you know that Tim and I are spearheading the fundraising for the private part, a part of the fundraising for the renovations. It looks spectacular. Now, mind you, I'm still carrying around upside down golf clubs, go. I don't know about playing on it, although I've heard wonderful things. We had a fundraising meeting last week, and there's a great deal of enthusiasm. You can go there and have a drink, you can go and do what I did and have a, sit in a rocking chair and watch the world go by and have a perfectly delicious lemonade, you can have food, you do not have to play golf. It's a really nifty place to go and kind of while away some time. So I want to be sure everybody knows that, that you don't, I mean, I'm not saying you shouldn't play golf, of course I'm encouraging you to play golf, but, you know, if what you've got is a half an hour to kill, it's pretty close to downtown, you can get there pretty quick. And go and, go and, go and get yourself some lemonade and admire the work that the city's done. And I will say, we had, we had, okay, so Parks and Rec and Public Works and Forestry all worked together to do the initial work there that the city has done, and it's outstanding. It is just outstanding. So my praise to our own city staff, it's always fun when you can look at something and go, "We did that, and we did that." So, thank you. All right. That's a double pitch, but I appreciate your indulgence, Mayor Lansing.
I'd like to add, if you do happen to play golf.
Would you climb in the right position?
City has done a lot of work to improve conditions at the course, and it's really vastly improved fairways, greens, everything, and the work will continue into this fall, so I urge our citizens to take advantage of this improved facility.
Yeah, I think one of the nice things about this was that special events can be held there. Have we, have we had some special events?
I'm so glad you brought that up. There will be a special event on the September 7th, I think, Thursday night, and we're going to be hosting an event there to kind of really frame out, just so you know, it will be a, we did a 90th birthday party last year with a very soft pitch about fundraising, but on September 7th, not such a soft pitch, it'll be a real pitch. So, but you will, you will, you'll hear more about it, and we'd love to have you come, because it's a really, you know, there's a tent and everything, it's quite swell, quite swell.
And Alderman, I would also add that the expanded patio, along with the tent that's in place, has already reaped benefits from additional outings that are there. But yes, other groups, you know, if the Lake Forest Caucus wanted to have their event there, they could make arrangements to have their event there.
Have we had weddings booked or anything?
I don't know if they've gone as far as weddings, but they could certainly contact the Pro Shop and talk to them.
Idea about the caucus.
Yeah, right.
Thank you, Mayor Lansing.
Thank you. Next agenda item is opportunity for citizens to address the City Council on non-agenda items. Is there someone in the audience? I do not see anyone. Next item is omnibus items for consideration. They are a total of six this evening. First is approval of the June 5th, 2017 City Council meeting minutes in your packet, as are all these others. Approval of the Forest Park Grounds Maintenance Service Contract for fiscal year 2018. Consideration of an ordinance approving a recommendation from the Zoning Board of Appeals. This would be first reading, and if desired by the council, a final approval. Consideration of a resolution clarifying the conditions of approval granted for the Elloa Farms Centennial Celebration by Ordinance 2017-36. Fifth is approval of the South Park Master Plan. And sixth is award of a bid for the Ferry Hall Bridge Viaduct Span Reconstruction Project. Would anyone like to discuss any one of these items or have it removed and voted separately? Any comments, thoughts? Most of these are things we've discussed in the past. Seeing none, I'd like to seek approval for the six, or make a motion for approval of the six omnibus items as presented.
Second.
City Clerk, so roll call vote.
Certainly, Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Rummel?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Eight yeas, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you. Next agenda item is, under new business, is approval of an ordinance amending the Lake Forest City Code relating to classes of licenses for alcoholic beverages and the consumption of alcoholic beverages in, in public. This is being presented to waive first reading and grant final approval, to be presented by Victor Philippini, City Attorney.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The ordinance in your packet tonight would create a pilot program to allow consumption of alcohol as well as the sale of alcohol down at the beach. This is an outgrowth of a strategic planning session that was held in February, where some interest to that effect was, was communicated to the council. And in trying to react to it, the objective was to take baby steps, and that's what this ordinance tries to do. It does permit, under very limited circumstances, both the consumption of beer and wine, which currently is prohibited at the beach, and generally through the public areas of the city, as well as authorizing sale down there. And the reason for coupling the two, the sale and the consumption, is that it is a way of regulating the consumption by regulating the sale. The specifics of the ordinance that's been presented, again, have been designed intentionally to keep a very short leash on this project. First, you'll note that we have limited the right to consume to those who have the appropriate, first it's to beer and wine, second it's for those in consuming out of the appropriate container, which will only be available through the licensed vendor. And third, it will also be limited in area. Reason for the area limitation is primarily one of monitoring and enforcement. The ability for the sales, the licensee, to sell the alcohol is going to be limited if they can't see who's getting it and who's consuming it. So we're trying to keep it within an area that would be more easily monitored by the licensee. The other, and perhaps most unusual element of this particular license program, is that the license is not for a, excuse me, it's not for a 12-month period, as our licenses usually are. These licenses are one week at a time, so if we find out that there's a problem, there's an ability to put the brakes on and do it pretty quickly. The initial pilot program is beginning July 1 and would run through October 1. It's for a limited period of time in the late afternoon and evening. And again, it's something that staff has presented in response to the comments that came out of the February work session, but it's done in a way that it can be closely monitored and carefully watched. After the program is done, there'll be an opportunity to review and decide what our next step is. But this is very much on the experimental basis, and I'll be happy to take any questions you might have.
So I have a question. Is there, is there any plan in place to actually introduce this? So we have dates, but is there, I mean, we have no infrastructure in place to actually utilize these dates or this license that I'm aware of?
Yes, and I can ask Sally Swarthout to come forward. We have had conversations with the vendor that is currently operating down there in anticipation of the council discussion here this evening, how it might work. There would probably be a press release that would go out tomorrow, we'd put it on social media to announce it. But Sally, can you articulate sort of what the vendor would do to ramp up for this three month period of time?
Well, the vendor is excited to be able to implement this program. As Bob mentioned, we definitely will be issuing a press release and getting it out on Facebook, but we will also be taking it to our constant contact, which reaches anyone who is registered with the Recreation Department, as well as utilizing the Rec's Facebook pages. This is certainly something that we want to see going, we want to see it successful this summer, so we're going to do whatever we need to do to get that word out to the public that this is open and available.
What's the venue where it's actually going to be? There's a limited area where you can serve this, so what is, where is that going to be?
There was a map included in your packet, and it indicates that we would utilize the North Pavilion area, the greens were just to the south of the North Pavilion, as well as an extension into the sand in front of, of the Pavilion at Cell 3. And in the sand, we would limit it from the ADA boardwalk to the southernmost groin of Cell 3, which is the cell that is directly in front of the North Pavilion.
Sally, you, by chance, don't have, it's page 58. Here, can you maybe put this, oh, nope, that isn't going to work.
I might just mention, when this idea was broached to me, I had far more questions than thoughts. It is interesting, it came up apparently at the strategic planning session, which is quite a cross-section of our community, at most of the tables for that evening, of the discussion, independent of the other tables. And I think it's, and the strategic planning session was populated by adults, and I think there's a thought that mature adults, citizens, would like to watch the moonrise with a glass of wine. And, you know, it's certainly done other places, it's done throughout Europe and whatnot. And so, you know, mindful that there were lots of good and valid reasons over the years as to why public consumption of alcohol on city property is prohibited. Here we have a recreational element in the beach that is populated by our citizens mostly, and it's a place to relax and socialize. And so the staff, since the strategic planning session, spent a lot of time trying to figure out, how could this work? I think we're all very sensitive about having this work right, or we're not going to do it. I mean, that's, that's a given. I think it's just, we've got to kind of feel our way into it, and we'll know a lot more in the month of October as to how it's all worked out. It, you know, one of the things about it, you'd like it to be a curse sort of naturally, be a simple and easy thing to do, it's not, doesn't come across as a highly regulated, onerous kind of thing. So alternatives are, why don't we just allow folks to bring beer and wine down to the beach? Well, sometime within the first two or three days, some, somebody will roll up, open up their trunk, and bring out five cases of Schlitz for a volleyball party, and sort of take the whole thing out of scale, which is more regulated or more overseen by having a vendor with some observation of it. Obviously, all the city's other ordinances about public nuisances and inebriation and all that apply. This is just, you know, in that world of trying to write, having to write rules for good behaving, upright citizens, trying to take care of that 2% of situations that sort of come up. So I was turned around by the staff on this, to try this on a pilot basis, and I just can't emphasize that enough. This is, let's just see how this works. And I'm sure there will be revisions, and it may be curtailed, it might be expanded, but let's just see. And I think there's a lot of good staff, leadership, and attention that's going to be given to this, to make sure it's rolled out right. And the vendor has been a very responsible and excellent vendor with respect to the food service there, and how that's managed, and their employees, and the training they're going to have for vending beer and wine and so forth. So why not? Let's give it a try.
I have several questions. First, it looks like you're trying to roll this out in a matter of two weeks, the July 1 date. And it sounds like you have your licensee already lined up, being the existing vendor of the food items. This vendor, do they have experience in selling liquor in any other environments?
They do. They own a restaurant in the western suburbs where they serve food and alcohol on a daily basis, so they are well-versed.
And when you talk about approved containers, what sort of idea, what are you looking for, like for beer and for wine as approved containers?
It will be a container that is specific to the vendor, so it will have their markings on it.
Were we leaving it up to them, whether they pour the beer in a glass or put the wine in a?
Because it is under their licensing, they will be, they will be determining how they're going to designate that approved container. My guess would be that it will be in a specific type of glass.
Okay, well, if you're introducing glass, that does raise a little bit of concern at the beach area.
Well, plastic, a specific type of plastic glass.
Don't use.
I doubt that's going to happen.
And if I might jump in, one of the things about the draft ordinance, it is stated in generic fashion, because you don't adopt an ordinance for a designated vendor or licensee, it's stated in the generic. But when we get to the point of issuing the actual license, there will be a lot more detail. For example, again, if you look at the ordinance, we don't identify where the confines will be, although as the photo up, the marked photo up on the screen shows, that's already been something thought through, and that will be identified in the license itself. So there's a lot more detail to be fleshed out or to already have been considered for the license that is not reflected in the ordinance.
Well, the way I read the ordinance, it talks about the licensee, you know, suggesting what sort of container it's proposing, and the commissioner having approval over that process.
That's correct. And as I understand it, there have been some preliminary discussions about that with the anticipated vendor.
Because that is something that I think does need to be carefully reviewed and determined, so you don't invite other problems with that. And also, in terms of the demarcation that we have here on this map, the red, and again, the ordinance says something to the effect that the licensee has the responsibility of posting signage. Do you have any thoughts as to what's going to happen come July 1? Is it just going to be a sign here and a sign there, or will there be more of an effort to demarc, because you don't want people going beyond it? Before I get to my question of enforcement, what do you envision in terms of the demarcation, so people know how far they can walk with their beer or wine?
Alderman Bushman, I, my plan is for city staff to work very closely with the vendors to create the appropriate signage, so that people know where the spot is at. I don't want to oversign, but we do not want to undersign either.
Right, you don't want gates and fences either?
No, I, we don't, we don't.
You know, what we could think about was something akin to the Berlin Wall. That was, that was decided, it might, it might not get built in time.
Want to build a wall too, huh? Who's going to pay for it?
That was Zick's idea, that was quick to turn. I think we're going to ask the Germans to pay for that, but, you know, actually, the week-long license, again, was intended to allow this to be a little more organic in the way it plays out, so that if we determine that it's too big of an area, we can adjust it for the following week. If it's not well enough marked, we can adjust it. If it's oversigned, we can, we can scale it back. The, the whole notion is that we're trying to take baby steps, and as we do, we're going to have our, our little tumbles, but we intend to get up and try to get it better the next time.
That relates to the early comment, it's just a pilot program. One last question, enforcement. Who is given responsibility to see that people have, whether it's the appropriate Who is given responsibility to see that people have, whether it's the appropriate container or stay within the boundaries? Who's going to enforce it?
That would be the vendor's responsibility, but again, I believe there will be aid from the city staff, as well as possibly some early presence from the police department.
Yeah, we're going to want to make sure that everybody recognizes that there are rules, and that if the rules are violated and abused, that this is a privilege that could go away.
Right. No, I'm thinking, again, where you're going to put the burden on your lifeguards or your staff at the beach for them to keep people into the right area.
And it is going to be challenging, because you never want to ask a 16-year-old to tell a 40-year-old you're outside of the area and get back.
And I don't think they signed up for the job with that in mind either.
Right. And I, and I think, you know, part of this is going to go through education of our own residents, but I think early on, and that's why Sally indicated, I think early on, we will have presence of a police officer around, just to remind people that there are rules. And I think if we are firm right from the start, that we'll have fewer problems.
I have one comment. I think a week is too short of a leash. Maybe a month? I mean, if I'm a vendor, I've got to do all my inventory, I've got to buy the cups, I've got to get the wine, I've got to buy the beer. I mean, it just seems like a week is like way too short.
But, but doesn't it re-up automatically? Doesn't it say that it?
It does, and we had that conversation. I don't think, Sally, did the vendor have any concern, because we're waiving, I think, some of the fees, and so their outlay isn't that expensive, right?
Correct. And the vendor actually likes that weekly revisit, because it also gives them the opportunity to say, we don't think this is working, as well as the city to be able to pull back, should it be necessary.
Okay, that's, that would be fine, that would be fine. I would encourage us to put a more positive face on this also. I mean, gee whiz. Well, this is, you know, I mean, we're trying to market ourselves or whatever, you know, I mean, this is like Gestapo stuff. Let's just take a little more.
Sorry. I couldn't agree with you, and I dare say the rec department will be at this more enthusiastically than all this sounds, but we do issue licenses, and it's been very carefully considered since 1982, when the first liquor license was issued. Well, other than the lantern, which has always been, been there.
For what it's worth, this was intentionally put as a city attorney presentation because of the cast that I would put on it.
Yeah, that was a good thought.
Most approval, if it is approved, is going to be a quick handoff from me to the rec department.
Right, right.
Could I just second what Jack said? In terms of the, you know, I mean, our, really, our beach and the parkland along there, but the recreational possibilities, I mean, there is not a realtor in town or anybody who has a visitor come who doesn't take them to the beach. This is the, this is the first place people go. This adds, I mean, it's spectacular, it'll be spectacular whether we serve beer and wine or not. But to have that enhancement for people, and at our, at our board meeting, a couple of, you know, young adults came up and said, to be able to go after dinner and, you know, and watch the moonrise, and, you know, have our kids play on the swings, and we sit there with a glass of wine. I mean, I don't think this is going to be anybody's place where they're going to, you know, they're going to indulge. I think people see it as sort of an extension of family time, just sort of the, I just think it has wonderful potential, and frankly, it can enhance the marketing a little bit too, and, and that's fine. But why not build on something that we already have that's extraordinarily positive? If it doesn't work, we gave it a go, you know? It didn't work. So, we'll either, we'll either figure out how to make it work, or we're, or we'll, you know, we'll back off, but let's give it a try. And I agree, I'm feeling very positive about it. In fact, I can almost taste that wine. What kinds of wines do you think are going to be being offered?
Maybe, Jack.
Well, we have mostly American, we have some European.
You and I, glass in hand, ought to go, welcome.
And I would offer to taste test anything, but.
You know, endless possibility.
It was mentioned earlier that the fees are being waived. If this gets in and gets settled and sort of becomes acceptable, and is there a chance to generate some fees? Or we've got some personnel involved here.
Well, I should, there will be sales tax revenue as a result of the sales of that. That's not what's being waived, that's the fee, there's fingerprinting fees and so forth that the vendor would have to go through. And as we talked about the short-term nature of this, it was sort of unfair to ask them to put out a lot of money for no expected return, or, you know, if we decide a week later, but.
We're going to have a big look at this in October and so on. If it's working, then yes, there will be fees, you know, permit.
I have a couple of questions. I hate to put a wet blanket on this, but, okay, I, well, come back. My concern was, was, well, when I looked at it, I did see a lot of opportunities for underage drinking, and I think we need to closely monitor that. And I think that's going to require some police presence down there, maybe, you know, monitoring even up at Forest Park as people maybe, you know, come up the stairs and from the beach. So, you know, it did strike me that way. And then, maybe Vic can, and Bob can address the liability issues and the insurance issues associated with this.
First, to just comment on your first comment, that was one of the things that we had a great deal of discussion about as to what we do with this pilot program. And the reason why we have all the limitations we do is to minimize the risk of underage drinking and over-service and the like, because our requirements under our general liquor provisions require the licensee to have BACIT-trained servers, and BACIT-training is a conventional training for all liquor establishments, so that they have means of identifying not only identification cards, but also indicia of over-served individuals.
Yeah, I'm familiar with BACIT-training.
The, the second part of your question, I've now forgotten, but I'm sure I have an answer for it.
Um, the, well, you know, the issue is, I mean, it's like we have in households.
Oh, liability.
Yeah, but, you know, certainly adults also pass liquor off to underage.
And again, that was part of the eye-shot aspect of the area for service and consumption. As far as liability goes, all the city is technically doing is issuing a license. For that, we have clear tort immunity under the Tort Immunity Act in Illinois. The licensee is required to have dram shop insurance, so there's protection of others if there is a failure in the part of the licensee to oversee those who are served. I think that there was a lot of concern of not legal liability, but moral responsibility, as well as part of all this goes, and that's part of what the pilot program is intended to try to minimize, and find a way to provide the amenity with as little risk to all involved. And I think that that's very much what the effort's going to be over this first go-through.
So, when you're talking about the vendor, having increased expenses potentially, he could be paying a higher premium, I suppose, for his dram shop coverage and other insurance coverage, which then goes to the comment about maybe we should have a longer pilot period.
And again, I think you'll see that the license fee is something that we talked a great deal about. One of the things that we looked at is how does that compare to our other licensees? If these were, if this were just under our general restaurant license, for example, it would be a much higher fee. Recognizing that this is a pilot program, that there are gear-up costs, the fee was cut back substantially, so it'd be more in line with the level of investment and expectancy of return. This has been communicated at some degree with the anticipated licensee, and we're trying to make it work.
Rob, I have a question. We received an email today, and the one about this, and the one thing that caught my eye was closing earlier on weekdays. Do you have any comments on that, or did you talk about it? Because I think it's open till 11:00 every day.
It is open till 11:00 every day, and that is historically the hours of that particular park, for as long as I can remember. So, for me, as an operator, that is something that I am used to.
But to be clear, that's the hours of the beach. The hours of liquor service are, help me?
Four to nine.
Four to nine.
Correct.
Okay, I think there was some confusion in the note on that. And then the other part of that note that we received is that, just to be totally clear, Lake Forest, the city of Lake Forest is not going into the liquor vending business here, okay? We are a licensee of this, no different than if it were a restaurant. Yes, there is one impact that's a little different, which is the consuming alcohol on public property, on city property, which is a defined area at the beach, and so forth, so.
I think Alderman, application on that, as I understood, the four to 9:00 PM, 9:00 PM is where they can no longer serve liquor. It does not prohibit a person from continuing to consume the liquor that they had bought up till the 9 o'clock closing time on the beach, and they have that much purchases till 11 o'clock or whenever. But again, I, I think we've got a balance here between the pilot program, the desire that the licensee be successful, the promotion issue, but I think very strongly, let's keep it a week at a time, let's examine all the different issues as we go forward, what sort of problems, if any, we encounter, what sort of successes we encounter, and we can always adjust it to, whether it's the license fee, the term of the license, and type of containers or whatever else. Good luck, Sally.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a good point. I mean, to build into all this thinking, I don't know, you know, it's hard to have hard lines on everything, but then again, they don't serve beer at United Center during the third period either, so.
I might, just going back to Alderman Morris's question, is that, as Sally indicated, those have been the historical hours. I know the question was raised as to whether or not we might want to close earlier. The problem is, if you close early, it doesn't mean there won't be people at the beach, especially young people, actually. They would probably prefer if we closed it earlier, because they don't want to be there when adults are there, they want to be there after adults are there. But I think we could ask the Park and Rec Board to just sort of revisit it and say, does this still make sense going forward? But I think based on police activity and so forth, whether we close it at 9:00 or 10:00, it's not going to make that much of a difference, because the activity, I think, is after 11:00 and later in the evening when then it's closed.
I think, just being in Ward 1, and the fact you can't park over there, you get a lot of foot traffic going back and forth to the train station, wherever they park, so late in the evening, that could be not good for some of the residents on Westminster or Deer Path or.
Sure. We'll have the Park and Rec Board take a look at it.
Yeah, I have 12 questions that I'd like to ask.
Which type of beer?
Just kidding. We actually accomplished something amazing tonight, and that is to make a presentation of alcohol at the beach a more dour presentation than our pension discussion. So, I, I mean, really, I think this is an exciting opportunity to do something that a lot of people have interest in, and it's not about, you know, illegal behaviors, it's about truly enjoying one of the most amazing assets that this community has. And I think we need to be a little more enthusiastic about this. I mean, I can't, I just, if you were at that meeting, by the way, this was the most exciting thing that anybody talked about at that meeting. I mean, there's, so I think we have to be careful about, about having our timeframe for success being too short, because, I mean, this is, this is a rather rapid evolution for, you know, going from absolutely not, who could imagine such a thing, to doing it by July 1st. So, let's give it a break, huh?
Could we adjourn now, Mr. Mayor?
Randy, thank you.
Just a suggestion.
Why didn't you say that at the beginning of the discussion?
We need a motion, though. So, I'll make a motion, and I need a second. With regard, approval of an ordinance amending the Lake Forest City Code relating to classes of licenses for alcoholic beverage and the consumption of alcohol beverages in public to waive, also waiving first reading and granting final approval. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And is this a roll call?
It will be. Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you want to open the issue to the public.
Yes, because this is an ordinance. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a comment on this, or ask a question? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the motion, for which we have a second. And will the clerk please call the roll?
Certainly, Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Rumel?
Aye.
Alderman Tack?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you. Any other items for council discussion? Hearing none, ask for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Your meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.